Law, I will notify and indicate that because of the COVID virus situation. Pardon?
Uh, I think if we could all mute whenever we're not speaking, we won't get that feedback.
Okay. Under all my law, I'm declaring that it's inappropriate and impractical to have an in-person meeting because of the COVID virus and this meeting was being recorded as well as being broadcast. We can call the meeting to order to have the secretary call the roll.
Don?
Here.
Susan?
Here.
Me, here. Julian?
Here.
Phil?
Here.
Joyce?
Here.
Barbara?
Here.
Cassidy?
Here.
And Harriet?
Here.
We do have a quorum. The only item of report for the business, uh, the president's report is that we should announce that Harriet's excused from the February meeting for reasons of health according to our bylaws. That would bring us to the secretary's report and the review and approval of the February 10, 2021 minutes. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes?
I don't have a correction to the minutes, but I noticed that on the agenda page, it says Wednesday, February 10th, and it should be March 10th.
Yeah, there's a revised agenda that was sent out, but you probably didn't see it.
Oh, sorry. I didn't see it.
Yeah, actually.
Never mind.
Diana tells me that the correct one was posted, so that we're, we have no problem with that.
Yeah.
There is one correction in the financial report, uh, in the first line, February is misspelled. If I'm looking.
Referring to.
Pardon me?
This is in the, the minutes of the February meeting?
I think that's what I'm looking at.
Okay, alright.
In the financial report?
Okay.
Am I looking at an old one? Got a little.
Correct. I see it.
I always thought February was a funny way to spell that word.
It is.
Any other corrections to be noted? Is there most of the minutes as corrected?
I move approve the minutes.
Second?
Pardon?
Nothing. I didn't hear Joyce at first. She seconded it.
Okay.
Been moved and seconded that the minutes be approved as corrected. Is there any discussion? If not, call the roll.
Don?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Me, yes. Julian?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Harriet?
Yeah.
Motion is carried. Do we have any correspondence or communications?
No, we do not.
Bring us to the financial report. First item is approval of bills, uh, up through March 16, 2021. Comments, motions?
I move for the approval of the, uh, financials.
That's a motion to pay the bills?
I'm sorry.
Yeah. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? They're not appearing. I will call the roll.
Sorry. Don?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Roland, yes. Julian?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Harriet?
Yeah.
Motion carries. Uh, the second item under financial report is, uh, it would be appropriate for a motion to accept the financial report for, through February of 2021.
I have one question on the balance sheet.
Sure.
Gwen, it shows 135,000 plus, uh, accounts receivable. Is that what it still owes us on the property taxes?
Um, yeah, roughly speaking. There's a bit for the replacement tax left and then about 100,000 for the property taxes still to be collected.
Okay. Any idea when the city is gonna go and, uh, or whether the, uh, county is gonna have the money?
No. Um, the last part is generally, um, I think they go back and people that basically didn't pay in the beginning, so it's kind of triples and it's hard to say exactly when. We usually do get all, but I'd say about 5,000. But I don't really know if COVID kind of affected it in some way. I can ask about it though. I'll ask them if they have an idea because.
Well, I just thought that they already had the tax sales, so I thought maybe.
So, yeah. Anyway. I'd say it is running a little slower than it usually is. I'll email the people at the city and ask them if they can give me an idea and update me next board meeting.
Okay.
Is there a motion to approve the February financial report?
One more question? On item 232, the utilities are something like 300%. Has there been a problem over there?
What'd you say?
I'm showing, oh, for the library. Um, no, we did just do an energy audit with Ameren. Or are you looking at 232? Oh, I see. Yeah, the, if you recall, the, um, at the brush building.
Yeah.
They had that water issue where somebody left the hose on and it caused a $300 bill, so that's the bulk of it. Usually it's about, say, 17, $18 a month for water over there. And then that month was quite large, so I think that's most of the reason it was so high. And then we've taken steps to mitigate that. We, uh, we now have a key that the people who water the Japanese garden, they have to come get it, so they, you can't leave the hose on anymore.
Well, and honestly, this, um, when we've had issues in the past, like when our plumbing flooded over here, the city didn't charge us for all that water at all. So us getting off with $300 or extra water use is, um, you know, lucky compared to what they probably could have done in the past.
That's true.
Is there a motion to approve the report?
I think we had a motion before, did we not? And then some discuss.
Just pick on this one.
Okay. We approve the financial report for February of 2021.
I'll second.
Very well. It's been moved and seconded to approve the February financial report. Is there any further discussion? If not, call the roll, please.
Don?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Me, yes. Julia?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Harriet?
Yes.
That motion carries. It brings us to your report, Diana.
Okay. Um, building and grounds maintenance, um, had quite a lot kind of going on. Um, we consulted, um, with, um, a solar energy company. Um, uh, it's interesting. Um, there's actually more room on this roof than there is on the brush roof, which surprised me. Um, so, uh, we won't be able to, we'll apply for a grant again until maybe next fiscal, not this coming fiscal year, but possibly the fiscal year after, we might be able to, um, afford to replace this roof. Um, because that's something that we would need to do before installing solar. Um, essentially, um, the most common thing, um, for municipalities to do is, um, to do a buyback sort of program where, um, you have the solar installed on your roof for free. And then for seven years, you, um, you lease your panels and you get a discount on your energy. And then at the end of that seven years, then you can, um, you have the option to choose, to choose to purchase your solar panels at a deeply discounted rate, which sounds like it would probably be about $20,000. And then you owe them, you own them, and then you would get the full benefit, which would be about a 65% decrease in your energy bill overall. So, and in, and in the interim, uh, while you're leasing your panels, um, you'd still get probably about a 10% uh, decrease in your energy bill. So, um, it does seem like a good, uh, a good idea. There are some issues to be aware of, and we've got plenty of time to think about it. One issue is, of course, that anytime you go to replace your roof, you're going to have to, um, have your solar panel, panels, uh, taken off and then put it back on. Um, so that will add to the expense of future replacements. Then, um, some others are, at the end of that seven years, of course, if you choose to purchase, then you're also responsible for the repairs and maintenance on those, um, panels. Um, Harlan Bonzak, um, our architect, is not a fan of the idea. Um, he says that, uh, when it all comes down to it, you don't save that much money, but of course, there are other reasons to do it besides that money. Um, the, uh, other thing, though, that he's concerned about is that if we had a big storm, they could blow off, and if they do, or scoot around, and if they do, then they can wreck your roof. So those are the concerns for us to consider. Um, other things are that we are still waiting on estimates, uh, to replace, um, our boiler in the main building, um, with a gas boiler instead of an electric one, um, because it'll be more fuel efficient, more efficient. So that should help our energy bills to go down. Uh, we're still waiting on that estimate. Uh, we've saw estimates from, um, three different, um, businesses. Uh, one of them said it's too small a project for them to do. Another one has not gotten back to us after repeated attempts. And then the third, which is Heartland, um, the company that we, we, uh, use for, um, our regular maintenance, um, is going to get us a, an estimate. We're still waiting on that, but they have been in communication with us. So that's something we would like to get done this fiscal year if we can. Ameren has, uh, agreed to run the lines for, and actually we paid for it in advance, I think it was $200.
Wow, that's awfully cheap.
Yeah, very cheap. Yeah. Um, and if we do replace the boiler, Ameren will pay about $7,000, a little bit more than 7,000 for it. Um, so hopefully that'll, that'll be affordable. And the other thing that we are definitely looking to do this year, uh, because it's time to do so, is to just go ahead and replace the brush roof. Because it's 30 years old. Uh, we do have to go up there and patch it. Um, and if we can get this one replaced this year and then get the, uh, the main building replaced at least, you know, a fiscal year away from it, um, that'll separate them enough so that we don't have, um, a single year where we have to replace them both and we get a big financial hit. So I did, we did consult with Harlan. Um, he thinks it's less than a $50,000 project, probably more like about 42,000 or so. But difficult to say for sure. Of course, it'd have to go out for bid because it's more than 25,000. And he, uh, has a contract here, um, which I'm authorized to sign, but I'll go ahead and just tell you what is in it. Essentially, uh, he thinks that the cheapest thing for us to do in terms of his services is to pay on an hourly fee schedule, um, and not to exceed, uh, 3,800. So he will write up the bid documents and help us through the bid process, and then also, um, provide some minimal oversight of the project itself. It's not a super complicated project, but, um, but writing the bid is a little bit, um, and just, um, you know, advocating for us. Since you don't know who you're gonna get as a, um, as a contractor when you go out for bids, so, um, so he'll provide that oversight and make sure that everything is done correctly. So we would love to see that get done this fiscal year, um, but we are partway into March, so it might end up sliding into the following fiscal year. But we do have the money, um, budgeted to do that project and to do the boiler. So that's what we have for building and grounds, um, at the moment. COVID-19 procedures, um, I think that we should probably be able to, um, open, get, go beyond appointment only and, and open the doors in, um, uh, either late March or, uh, right away in April. So, um, and, um, the only other news I have is that the, um, the project that we're doing, uh, with the mentorship project, um, that I talked about, uh, last month, is, um, we did get additional funding for that, so we have, um, the $5,000 grant from the Illinois Humanities, and now we have a $6,000 grant, um, from Healing Illinois. And I'm still waiting on, um, another potential grant source for that as well. So, um, there's no overlap in what those things pay for. It's just, uh, that the project is more than $5,000, so, um, uh, any funding that we get will, um, enhance, enhance what we can, can do, um, and also make it so that the project costs, uh, costs to the library itself for minimal. So, and that's an exciting, it's an exciting project. We're getting kind of the logistics worked out on it right now. Um, that's it for my report. Do you have any questions?
It seems to me it would be appropriate for the board to give you, uh, affirm your authority to sign this contract. So I'll ask if, if, is there a motion to approve, uh, the director signing the contract to engage, uh, Harlan Bonzak as our, as an architect with regard to this project of roofing in the brush building?
So moved.
Was there a second?
Second. This is Cassidy.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Cassidy. Uh, any discussion? Call the roll.
Don?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Me, yes. Julian?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Harriet?
Yeah.
That motion carries. Do we have any committee reports? I see none. Any unfinished business? Any new business? I would like to say that I am impressed with, uh, the work of Jennifer Robertson and doing all the things that she's done in coordinating these various different groups that have, uh, sought to be on, uh, the webinar, uh, posting. I think it's been a real service to the community. I'd just like to pass along to her, uh, my personal, I think probably the board's view, that she's just done an outstanding job with that.
Yes, I agree.
I agree, and I also appreciate getting a little report from the social work interns. I do have a question about the staff reports. Oftentimes in the statistics, they talk about active and passive. What does that mean?
Um, we had to fill out a, um, uh, Illinois Public Library Annual Report annually, uh, goes to the Illinois State Library, and they ask us to separate, um, programs into active and passive, and that is, uh, so that, um, at the federal level, when they turn in those statistics, they are comparing apples to oranges. So, um, passive programs are, um, defined a little bit differently under the, over the whole COVID procedures. They've had to, to figure out how to define active and passive, um, when you're doing an online program. But, um, basically, if I, if we are doing a Zoom program that is live, that people are attending live, then those, then that is an active program. But if we just record a storytime and then we throw it on YouTube and just tell people to watch it, that's a passive program. Um, a passive program under normal circumstances would be, um, say, we set out a craft for people to do and we put instructions on the table and you can stop by and do it whenever you want to. That's a passive program. Whereas an active program means that people are, are actively engaged with it, um, with your staff.
I have a question, since you mentioned the craft. Were you, uh, distributing a packet that included, um, uh, colored pencils and, uh, uh, artwork that could be done? And was that to anyone who wanted that?
Yeah, we have, um, all three, 2020, distributed, um, craft packets. And, um, so we have, um, an adult packet and a children's packet, and those get refreshed. I'd have to look at, I'd have to ask Jennifer Francine, um, how often they put, they're able to put them out. But, um, they are, the children's ones are for, for any children who want them, and then in the adult ones are for any adult who want them. And there've been a few family ones as well, um, that, where we've encouraged families to do the craft together. There was one, um, where, uh, there was a, a make, a felt blanket kit, um, that, um, then you were to, given the option to return it to the library, and we would give it to St. Francis Animal Care for the animals. So Francine organized that. That was a family one. Um, a lot of our.
It's these kits, but I, for some reason, I guess I just assumed that they were for library members or, uh, and I've heard a couple of people from Carterville who've been saying, go over to Carbondale and pick up, you know, these packages, so, I wondered about that.
We have, we have not limited them to cardholders. Um, we don't limit our programs to cardholders either, so, um, and with it being a patron pickup, people just call on the phone and say, I'm here, I, I want an adult craft kit, and we bring it out to them. So we don't really keep track of who it is or where they're coming from. Um, we advertise them through social media, and we have a newsletter that go, newsletters that go out to different age groups, and adults and a teen and a children's one. Um, so that's how people find out about them. Um, but, yeah, like so many things in Carbondale, people from other towns do, take advantage of what we offer, but, um, but while we don't have to, we are, you know, it is sort of part of our, our consorcial agreement with other libraries as system members to share resources. And, um, we absolutely have to when it comes to sharing the collection, but we are expected to share knowledge as well. People call us a lot, um, and ask, you know, they want an opinion from a bigger library. Um, we've encountered things we've never encountered, and so we, uh, we get phone calls from people and, um, in other libraries and, uh, yeah, their patrons come to our programs and, um, and, you know, our patrons probably also go and take advantage of their programs too, so. So, yeah, it's just kind of part of resource sharing.
At this point, you're not, all these programs are virtual, correct? You're not doing anything in the library. I thought you had an impressive array, really, of virtual programs, and if people took advantage of them, you know, and now you're sponsoring the, um, forums, you know, three different forums. So, I mean, it's a wide, you know, I was very impressed by it. It's very good.
No, thank you. It has, uh, it's been impressive. I'm very proud of how well our staff have handled it. Um, you know, they're doing the programs that they develop themselves, that they're also saying yes whenever they can. It's, you know, when an organization comes to them and wants to do a program, um, as long as they can work it into our Zoom schedule and into their work schedule, um, and as long as it's something that we would do, um, or entertain doing as a library program. So we're not doing, um, private, um, you know, the Rotary Club can't just come and have its meeting here, because that's just for Rotary Club members. But if they want to put on a public event, um, then they can talk to us about sponsoring that. And if that's a public event that we would normally feel would work well as a library program, um, you know, with a speaker or something like that, then we'll do that. So, um, I, we've been able to do, um, you know, we did the, um, the community-wide MLK celebration. We did the Neighborhood Alliance meeting. We've done a, a lot of, um, a lot of, of programs, uh, in partnership with the AAUW and, uh, just, uh, several organizations have reached out to us, um, to put on public programs that they may have put on independently any other year, but they can't do it this year. So I feel like we've, we've been able to keep them, um, connected with one another and, and keep their, their organizations, relevant rather than stagnating during the pandemic. And it's just been, it's also been a real blessing to us as the library. We've made great networking connections, and we've been able to put on spectacular programs with the help of these organizations too. So, um, it's really been a win-win all the way around. And.
Yeah.
For an election year, if you hadn't had a way to listen to the candidates, that would have been really difficult. So, um, so, yeah, very, and Jennifer has handled every one of those candidate forums.
Um, very good. Do you know if the, it has the staff all been vaccinated or do you have any idea?
Um, we're close to all vaccinated. Um, um, not, we haven't all had second shots, but most of us have been. So we should be able to get the doors open late March or early April.
That's good, yeah. The current shot has worked well, but it would be nice. And for a while you, before, you were letting some people into the library.
And we are open for appointment. So, um, people just call us and make an appointment. We, we let in one, um, one person or, or family or group every 20 minutes. And, uh, and for the most part, people are, have been able to make appointments and they want to. And, and if they just, you know, need to run in and grab tax horns or something, um, they'll call or knock on the door and we'll either grab those for them or if they want to come in and pick them up themselves, if they're just gonna be a minute, that's fine too. We just, the appointment allows us to touch base with them before, um, before we just release them into the library. So we can make sure that they're wearing a mask and make sure that they haven't been diagnosed or told to quarantine. And, uh, it keeps down the number of people who are in the building, but it really allows us to make that, that contact. And when they call for an appointment, we reiterate that. When they come in, we reiterate that. It allows us to also make sure that they don't stay, um, beyond their 90-minute appointment. So when we do open the doors, we try and enforce a, um, a, a limit on the amount of time people stay in here, so we don't end up with too many in, at a time. We don't have that viral load of someone being in here breathing for eight hours. And, uh, it's difficult to do that if you don't have a, have them, you know, having to sign in when they come in.
Yeah, seems like a very good system, yeah.
And if you're able to open in a month, would you be able no longer to have to quarantine the books?
Um, I, that's really a, a separate issue. So, I mean, the, the germs have not changed. Uh, what will have changed in a month is that our staff will be vaccinated. That doesn't affect the public. And so when we quarantine the books, we're trying to keep the public safe. So that if somebody with COVID had that book, um, and was coughing on it, and then they, then they turned it in, um, and it rubbed up against another book, the next person to check out those materials, um, would, will not, uh, get COVID because those materials have been in quarantine for seven days long enough for it to, to die, um, or become unviable. So that hasn't, that has not changed. Um, I think.
People who have an overdue book that they claim has been in quarantine?
Um, well, we, if, if they, it's quarantined for seven days, and when we check in books, there's a seven-day forgiveness. So sometimes people call and they say, I've turned in a book, and we say, okay, well, check back with us. It's, uh, it'll be checked in. Um, but if you claim it, if you claim today that you turned it in at some point in the last seven days, and then a month from now, you, you, uh, claim that you checked it in, I mean, I will go look on the shelf, but it's not there. It's not because it's in quarantine, because it's not quarantined anymore. So that's not really an issue too much. Um, we've been, uh, we've been lenient and forgiving with, with people in general this year. Because we realize that life is difficult for everyone, um, and that it's, uh, hard to stay organized when you're having to organize everything in your life very differently. So, so we've been pretty forgiving. But, uh, the fact that those books are in quarantine doesn't really mess up our system too much, other than occasionally people will call and say, doesn't really mess up our system too much, other than occasionally people will call and say, hey, I got a overdue notice and I returned this a couple of days ago and, well, then it's in quarantine, so.
Diana, when you say that you could open in a month or so, is that fully open? Anybody can come in?
Um, yeah, it would be open within the, with the same restrictions that we had before when we were open, like in August. Um, so we would have a limit on the number of people who can be in the building, so we're not gonna be having in-person programs in the building. Um, and we'd have a, uh, you know, limit on the amount of time that you're supposed to spend in here and you have to wear a mask the whole time. So it's a, a lot more interaction with patrons, a lot more having to walk around and remind people to pull their mask up and that kind of stuff. Um, and occasionally find someone who has been in there for, you know, a few hours. You know, we've noticed you've been in here for a few hours. Um, so, uh, so it's more, there's more interaction with the patrons in that sense. And, yeah, there'll be more people in the building. But, uh, that is what it was like here in August, so.
I don't know if this is new, but I found out about the YouTube channel the other day. So I haven't been able to attend all the candidate forums, so going back and looking at them is nice.
Yeah, thanks, I think we, um, we probably need to do a little push, um, to make that a little bit more discoverable.
I think this has been a good discussion. Our last item of business is patron behavior, do we have an issue?
Um, we do not have any issues right now.
Probably because of a limited attendance.
Right.
Anything else that anyone wants to bring up before we declare the meeting adjourned? Again, I'm just so happy to see a full complement of the board. Thank you all, adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you, Harriet.
Good to see you, Joy. Thank you, good to be back.